Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is a regular meeting of the South Kingstown Planning Board. The date is Tuesday, October 26, 2021. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Josh Daley.
Here.
Peter DiStefano.
Here.
Robin Pauthier is absent, and Maria Mack is here. Before we go on to the consent agenda, I want to just let folks in the audience know that the scheduled public informational meeting, public hearing for the conceptual master plan for Magnolia Lane, there is a request from the applicant that this hearing be continued to November. And once we get to that item in our agenda, we'll have a motion to that effect. So if anyone is here for Magnolia Lane, we won't be discussing that this evening. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda. This consists of approval of minutes, September 14, 2021 work session, September 28, 2021 regular session, and minor subdivision preliminary plan Correo minor subdivision. If there are no comments or questions, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Susan to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, from Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Onto the Magnolia Lane. They've asked for a continuance to our November meeting, which I believe Jay is the 23rd.
Yes, ma'am chair, it is the November 23rd.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to continue the public informational major multi-household land development conceptual master plan for Magnolia Lane to November 23, 2021?
Before we do that, do we have approval from the applicant that we'll get an extension in our time for review of the same amount?
Good question, Jay.
Yes, when I received the email request from the applicant, I responded back with the question as to whether they would agree to a one-month extension, and they would be.
Based on that, I'll make the motion to continue it to our November regular session.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, from Josh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Our next agenda item is a conceptual discussion in preparation for preliminary plan submission, Fieldstone Farms. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Good evening. Attorney Nicole Martucci from the Law Office of Duffy &amp; Sweeney at 321 South Main Street in Providence, here for the developer. We are here for a conceptual discussion prior to submitting preliminary plan to discuss one of the conditions, particularly with respect to sidewalks. We have our team here. In addition to the developer, we have the project engineer from DePree Engineering, Mr. Eric Preve, as well as the landscape architect, Mr. John Carter. So I'm going to hand it over to our engineer to sort of just present the discussion and get your feedback.
Thank you. And before Mr. Preve begins, Amy, could you give us a little background on the project and what has transpired in the last few years?
Yep. This, Amy Goen, special legal counsel, this development is a comprehensive permit. The master plan application was approved by this board with certain conditions. That decision with conditions, the approval with conditions, was appealed to State Housing Appeals Board. And in a written decision from March of this year, SHAB granted the developers' appeal in part as to the condition requiring the installation of a sidewalk, which is why we're here tonight. They denied the portion of the appeal relating to redesigning the development with the LMI units all being designated as accessory apartments. That decision by SHAB upholding the town's decision in part and denying and reversing part of the town's decision has been appealed to the Superior Court, so that appeal is still pending. They are entitled to pursue the appeal while also going through the review and approval process. So at this point, the next step for them would be, they do have a conditional master plan approval. The next step would be preliminary plan. And I think they are here in an effort to avoid potentially future litigation related to these sidewalks.
Very good. Any questions for Amy? Please continue.
Thank you, Amy.
Good evening. For the record, Eric Preve, P-R-I-B-Z-N-V-I-T-T-E. I'm a registered professional engineer with DePree Engineering, offices at 2 Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. As mentioned, yeah, the subdivision was approved as a master plan in September of 2018. Part of the approval, there were 30 conditions of approval. We're here specifically for one item tonight, just to get some additional feedback on it. Condition number 27, and I'm just going to read it just so that we're kind of all on the same page. It says, "As part of the preliminary plan submittal, the applicant shall depict sidewalks along one side of the proposed new subdivision street and along Stony Fort Road and Old North Road for the entirety of the property frontage. The preliminary plan shall depict the proposed location and design details for such sidewalks." So what we wanted to do was come forward for some discussion with this, rather than coming in with a preliminary plan submission, full application package, and say, "All right, maybe we should have talked about this first." We wanted to have a chance to clarify that, given especially the conditions of Old North Road. Since that time, we've teamed up with John Carter's office, landscape architect, to generate some alternatives, given the constraints along Old North Road. So Old North Road is a fairly narrow road between the edges of pavement. There's no edge treatments on it. There's no curbing, no berms today, limited grass shoulders, and then there's stone walls on the outside. There's utility poles on one side as well. We had looked at some alternatives, and we actually met with the planning staff and Department of Public Services as well to kind of get some early feedback as well, to vet out some ideas. And we discussed the alternatives along there. What we also wanted to do was really look at making sure to keep it as the rural streetscape of Old North Road. We were reading the conditions, and as such, there was for potential of curbing and sidewalk. And what we didn't want to do on that at the same point was create something that's more like a suburban area with it that has a, you know, very sidewalk-looking area. So we came up with an alternative to look at how to still adhere to that and comply with that condition of having the pedestrian access over the full frontage at the same point while trying to keep a rural streetscape. And what we had proposed as one of the alternatives was to actually increase the right-ofway in that area. So the limited right-ofway that is there today, take those stone walls that are existing along the existing property line today, rebuild them, because the stone walls along there, they're starting to break down over time. So we'd like to rebuild them, enhance them, and then also put a four-foot landscape strip and then a four-foot pedestrian accessway on the property so that we would actually take that property, the owner's property that today, and move that right-ofway by eight feet, so they're actually willing to move that land and dedicate that to Old North Road. I think that's an important detail as well. But in order to both get the pedestrian access that's requested, try and keep that rural streetscape of Old North Road, and try and get both to happen there, to comply with the condition, that's kind of the general. The other, one of the things that also came into consideration was, in that area, it's a relatively flat area as well. So the, if you were to put curbing on there, the ability to daylight in that area and get that, if you were going to put, you know, you're now creating a gutter flow that has impoundments that would need to be picked up somehow. It's very limited on where you can, just given the surrounding areas, to actually daylight to a lower grade. It was our understanding when meeting with the staff as well, that the town itself is working to look at some drainage improvements along that corridor already. So we're looking to dovetail with what's already planned and proposed in that area as well. So we'd provided a couple of graphics of what we were planning on, what we thought would be a good alternative to meet that condition at the same point to, thank you, that's perfect, to meet the condition, but at the same point, try and not have, you know, like I said, we didn't want to have a big, robust sidewalk. It didn't seem to fit with that corridor. So we tried to, this is what we came up with as well. So we'd be happy to hear feedback. Like I said, we wanted to present this for discussion in advance of coming in with the preliminary plan, rather than have everything in the package thrown out and said, "All right, well, this is kind of a tough sticking point," so.
Thank you. This is a very interesting and thoughtful idea, given the rural nature of this area. Initial questions from board members, thoughts?
Sure.
What do we just, like, um...
At that point, there's two points, not only, not only the, so we don't own the Compass School, obviously. So at that point, we would have to go into the right-ofway at that point and just have that continue just in that portion. We don't control that land. We can't do that. We could also contact them and see if it's something that they would be interested in as well extending. That's a possibility as well. We wouldn't want to approach that if we don't have general discussion in the first place. It wouldn't make sense to do that prematurely. At the same point, it may have to. There's one other place as well, actually. There's a wetland series that's adjacent to the, like, on our property. There's a wetland series, and we would have to go around that. That would have to come into the right-ofway, go back into the right-ofway, because we wouldn't be allowed to go over that wetland. I can't imagine that DEM would permit a pedestrian accessway across that area. So that would just, like any path, it would kind of, it would taper in at that point in the environmentally sensitive area.
Mr. Preve, could you just explain, on the vegetated strip, is that meant to be adjacent to the stone wall, existing trees, or would those be new plantings?
It'd be a combination of the two. If we could, depending on the, depending on if there was decent existing, we would like to retain as much as we could. It may need to be supplemented with some additional as well.
Any other thoughts, board members?
I like it as well. You know, I think it does balance things nicely in terms of getting to the sidewalk that we're looking for and not having it in a way that doesn't fit the road and the rural feel, as you said. I guess my question is around sort of the thoughts around stormwater and what, you mentioned not building up the sidewalk for the purpose of not, you know, having to deal with all the, it being impacted, but what's the thought on stormwater?
Sure. So the difference there would be, if we now created a gutter, if we created a gutter, we would have to pick it up or swale it somewhere. Now that it could be a surface, you know, we can grade it accordingly. We can have it go as overland and just be infiltrated on-site as much as possible. So the vision would be to just directly keep it going into the site, infiltrate as much on-site, and treat it as such.
And a follow-up question to that, I don't want to speak for Mr. Carter, but the fact that you'll have that vegetated area that is not only graded but represents plantings that are not overly crowded might allow for better infiltration as well.
Agreed.
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. We do have representative photos of this type of facility in the field, if the Planning Board was interested in seeing that.
Sure.
It's not a rural street. It's actually an arterial in a community north of Rhode Island, where you'll see that type of grass strip, stone wall, existing tree canopy, and then the pathway. A close-up of that. A more linear photograph of that. Close-up. In this instance, because there wasn't any vegetation, periodically, they introduced some street trees in that landscaped area. Here, you'll see an example, there's actually curbing in this area due to some of the topography, but here, giving existing constraints and grades, on the right-hand side, that walkway system was pulled closer to the curb. So although Mr. Preve has provided you with a representative cross-section, there are sections that he has mentioned on, along the frontage that will, in essence, meander with the topography and other environmental constraints. Here's an example where it was close to the road and then it's going internal or away from the road to the exterior of the right-ofway. An example where it comes back to the road, but if you look in the, in the background, it goes back off of the edge of pavement. Here, you can see, you know, if you look at this cross-section, the path is actually allowed to follow the topography of the road versus fighting it if you were doing a sidewalk along the edge. In public service and working with John Shock and Rich Bourbones, we're concerned about the establishment of that curb. Here, they were required to do a retaining wall. And then this is coming into a village area where it was much more linear in nature. And back to a more rural setting with two individuals using that walkway.
This could serve as a very good model for future appropriate applications. All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time and feedback tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda item is Development Plan Review, Public Hearing, Development Plan Review Advisory to the Zoning Board, Union Fire, Mattoonik Station 7. And before we hear from the applicant, Amy, could you just give the, both the board and attendees, a little bit of background and information on exactly what the Planning Board's level of authority is with this type of project?
Sure. So this application is here before the Planning Board tonight for advisory Development Plan Review, which means that the use of the fire station ambulance building is permitted. It would be going to the zoning board as a next step. So tonight, the Planning Board is continuing its review of the submitted plans. And this is an application that has been filed by the Union Fire District. The town is involved in the application or, you know, with the ambulance services, the EMS services. But at this point, the Planning Board's role is limited to reviewing the application that has been submitted and providing advice to the zoning board. So the Planning Board is not the final decision-maker in this process. The zoning board would be, would be the final decision-maker.
Thank you, Amy. And it's also noteworthy that with Development Plan Review, there is not a timeframe associated with it as there is in master plan and preliminary stages of review for other types of plans. And as Amy stated, to be clear, that this board does not have any authority in making any decisions about whether or not town functions as it relates to the EMS is appropriate or not appropriate for this location or any other. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Margaret Hogan, I am the district solicitor for the Union Fire District of South Kingstown. As the board is aware, we were here last month following up TRC in previous months. And for the edification of the board after last month's meeting, we did inquire of the planner to discuss the concerns of the abutting neighbors, the Schwabs, who were here last month and expressed their concerns. There was also discussion post-meeting in the lobby here. And so that took some time. And as a result of the meeting with the planner, our team then turned to providing changes to the plan to try to assuage the concerns that had been raised. Subsequent to that, an email began to circulate within the community from concerned citizens/neighboring property owners, people in the area vehemently opposed to the use that's being proposed, primarily, as I can understand it, relating to the EMS facility. It appears that the community is not necessarily opposed to the reconstruction of the fire station, although there have been some minor rumblings about that, from what I can tell. But it appears to be that the primary objection is the installation of the EMS building at this site and in this area at a distance from Route 1. Last evening, the, we were invited to attend the town council meeting where emails that had been submitted by some of the folks in the area to the town were going to be discussed. And so they were discussed. And I did present a reaction to that situation to the council last evening. I expressed our, the Union Fire District's deep disappointment with the manner in which the town has been proceeding as of late. It's very important, and for this board and for the members of the audience, to understand that the Union Fire District was accommodating the town of South Kingstown. We did not go to it. It came to us. We stopped our plans. We redesigned, redesigned, and redesigned, all at the expense of additional taxpayer funds through the Union Fire District. We had also negotiated an agreement in principle, it is not signed, to share some of those design costs with the town of South Kingstown, to the extent that those design changes were incurred by the town's requests. It was abundantly clear at last night's town council meeting that the town has backed away from its support or desire, in fact, for this project. The town council made it clear, certainly by two of the members, and it appeared as though two others. There was no vote, but it was abundantly clear that they were going to take an eventual position that even if we got through this process with the EMS building intact, that the town was very much contemplating walking away from the desire and the agreement, their prior agreement, to enter into the repayment agreement that has been structured. So it's a really disturbing place that we find ourselves in this evening. Nevertheless, what we're going to do, with the board's permission, is we will present to you the changes that have been prepared by our design team to accommodate the concerns that have been raised, to the best of our ability. To the extent that this board does not find that satisfactory, we would like you to consider the board's application without the EMS facility attached thereto. I note the chairwoman's representation concerning Development Plan Review and that there are no time constraints associated with that. I recognize that, and that's a true statement of the law. However, this project has been under planning for a very, very long period of time for the Union Fire District. It is a sorely needed redevelopment, and we would like to proceed with all due process and haste at this stage of the game. The pandemic, of course, delayed everyone. The costs are going up, and we would like to move forward. So we would like to present to you what we have devised to try to address the development plan concerns, not the use, as the chairwoman pointed out. Both uses are lawfully permitted. But we'd like to point out to you the Development Plan Review items and have you provide your feedback. And if you are still not satisfied, we will proceed with just the fire station. And with that, I'd like to call up our design engineer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. Just for the record, my name's Joe Casali. I'm a registered professional engineer with offices at 300 Post Road in Warwick. Madam Chair, if I may, direct you to the PowerPoint presentation. Just want to go through, as Attorney Hogan said, we'll start off with the last layout and progress through some of the changes we were able to make architecturally to the building, which freed up some site constraints. I think we were able to achieve every, almost if not everything, that we heard at the last meeting. But, so you see on there, what you see before you, that was the last layout we presented a month ago. One of the elements we've since removed from the architectural plans is the deck that was proposed. We've also reworked that access door on the east side and are now able to remove that sidewalk and retaining wall in its entirety. You'll see the retaining wall also on the westernmost side is able to be alleviated, holding not quite the edge of pavement, and I'll get into deeper detail, but the ability to just shrink that access road by another three or four feet. The dumpster enclosure that was once proposed, we'll be able to operationally handle that, we believe, with roll-offs, meaning roll-away typical, you know, ninety, nine-yard, excuse me, ninety-pound containers, one recycle, and a couple of refuse should handle the station on a weekly basis. And then also, we took a hard look at some of the parking layouts and some of the circulation in that area, and we tried to rework that again to the maximum extent practicable. But first off, when we look at the architectural floor plan, and I thank David Horton, my counterpart from A-Heronian, I think they did a nice job capturing what we tried to achieve in a short time. That red outline, Madam Chair, that you see is the former building. And so what was once there as program has been mitigated, has been shrunk by about 400 square feet. So in terms of the apparatus bay, that's really a fixed width for us, you know, for us to accommodate both the pumper truck and our ladder truck and also the water repertunities that you see. It's for us, with that type of construction of CMU block wall, the minimum we're going to be able to make that is 34 feet, four inches. But we were able to work a lot to the rear or the north of the station. We still accommodating the three bedrooms with staff of up to eight, the kitchen, the day room, restrooms we need, and storage and laundry. But we were able to reduce that footprint and keep it in a more linear fashion. Even in the bottom of the station, that storage, we shrunk it by about 200 square feet. What was about a 1,700-square-foot program is down to about 1,500. And that, too, keeps it in a linear fashion. When we plant this building now, when we try to site it, we are still, you know, four feet away from the property line, that easternmost property line of the land trust. And that gives us more than enough room for us to put our foundation in and do our work with inside our property line. with inside our property line. Looking at the building, the new footprint, the way it is, now we were able to eliminate a couple of those parking spaces up front. So we were originally asking for 12 spaces. If you remember, 16 is required by code. We're now going to show you a layout of 10 spaces. Operationally, we think this can work. It's not adding another dimensional variance, it's just going to increase the ask from four to six. When we were able to relocate that access door, we are now able to put it on the western side. That handicap space, because of the tight aisle width, you're going to see about 20 feet in total width, and that'll comport with ADA regs, but it'll also allow vehicles to ingress and egress safely around that spot. And then we have that handicap accessible walkway, and we're still able to get patrons and, you know, the public to and from under that 2%. There's the major change, other than architecturally, we shrunk that road down to, at one point, I think we were at 22 feet, 20 feet, and now we're at 18 feet. It's serviceable per the, you know, in essence, the authority having jurisdiction is Union Fire. And then that's going to leave us with about 4.64 feet from the property line. Whereas, you know, we can be that precise because we're to a Class 1 property line survey. And so when you look at that from a site, you know, from, this is a Google Earth, you know, rendering view, what you see is, right now, that existing edge of pavement is about 6, 6.4 feet off the property line. We're proposing to be about 4.6. So a reduction of about 18 inches. It should allow all of those bushes to remain intact. There may be some slight trimming, but still allow us to achieve our program. In terms of that deck, as we said, was removed. We're going to have, you know, stairs to get up to our first level, considering everyone will be parking in the back, and if they need to get up to that first level, they'll have exterior and interior means to do that. The only retaining wall that's left now in the site program is this small one that you see in the central location. It's about four feet in maximum height. We really need that because we're sloping down at an 8% slope to get that roadway down, but I need to hold that sidewalk at 2% to comport to the ADA regulations. So, you know, from the elevation standpoint, very similar, but a little bit thinner in terms of its profile, same with the west elevation of the lodge building, the rear or the north elevation. And so in terms of parking, as we stated, 16 is required per year code, one per 350. What we see here now are nine spaces, one being a van accessible ADA space. And so we would need relief from the zoning board, not only for that width of road, but also the number of spaces. And I'll get into that, Madam Chair, more specifically in a minute. Landscaping, some of the areas that were, that when we were allowed to move some of the boxes around, created some openings for us to put a little bit more landscaping in. In terms of impervious lot calculation, what you saw at the last meeting was about 23,000 square feet, or about 72%. We got this down to about 21,000 square feet, about 65%. You see that there's an extra snow storage removal area. We just want to keep that grass along with the original one we presented that is on the more northern face. We've added, at the suggestion of staff, we've got a private hedge along with a split-rail fence and some hydrangea bushes, some foundation plantings, and then that private hedge will continue on. We were also able to put landscaping more in that entryway, in that central location. Where we took out those two spaces, we're able to put some landscaping there as well, plantings and so forth. But the snow removal areas, both on the eastern side, will stay as just loom and seed, so we're able to, you know, obviously in inclement weather, have areas. I know there was also concern about the site distance, so while we could, we did a site distance analysis. We went out there last Friday, the 22nd of October. And so when you do a site distance analysis, Madam Chair, I'm sure you've seen your share of them being on this Board, you know, you look at that posted speed limit, but that's not really what's taken into consideration. Observed speeds are taken with a radar gun, such as we did. And the design speed, or what you base the site distance on, is that 85th percentile. And ASH chose minimum site distance for that, that 85th percentile, which was 33, is 33 miles an hour, was about 230 feet. And so when we look at the site distance in an eastbound direction, we have more than double that, greater than 475 feet to Matunic Beach Road. And we also have more than code would require, having in excess of 350 feet until we get to that vertical curve, and you can see that break in the road where a driver wouldn't be able to see over that vertical curve. So again, we're here, we were, in terms of where, we have been at our pre-application meeting, and obviously we're here before you tonight, Madam Chair, for our advisory, DPR review, and also a recommendation to the zoning board. There are waivers that we're asking for. They are still the same five that we asked for last month, which in essence is all landscaping related. Being a pre-existing non-conforming lot of record, we're not going to ever be able to comport, unfortunately, with some of these standards, including the street trees, in the parking lot screening, and also the building landscaping. So while we've reduced the amount of impervious area, while we've created more green space and landscaping empirically, dimensionally, we still need to ask you for all five of those waivers. And then in terms of zoning, there are two, in terms of dimensional relief, again, 16 spaces required by code, 10 proposed, requesting two. And then the width of that access road, your code calls for 24 feet, we're proposing 18, and that's another dimensional relief we will need to seek of six feet. And then ultimately, what we have filed in for under review, we actually have filed and received our freshwater wetlands permit this week, excuse me, strangely enough. It came in earlier in the week, so that's our permit for our freshwater wetlands from DEM. But we still have ways to go after zoning, including the water department building and so forth and so on. But I would be happy, Madam Chair, to answer questions of you or members of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Casali. Do you happen to have hard copies for the Board?
I do. I have hard copies of the layout, if you're interested, and I also have hard copies of that speed study.
And Mr. Casali, obviously, Board members have not had a chance to see this up until now. We do appreciate you making the effort to make improvements to the site plan, and I believe the staff has also not had the opportunity to look at this from the various perspectives necessary.
Yes, correct.
Are there any initial questions for Mr. Casali from Board members, with the understanding that this has not been digested?
Since the last meeting, have you had any discussions with the neighboring property owners? And we had perhaps suggested maybe working with them with some landscaping that you were not able to fit onto your lot because it was so constrained. I was hoping that maybe you would have some discussions and work towards something that would help mitigate, still meet your objectives.
Yeah, we did not have any direct discussions with the neighbors, other than through staff. What we, we are to understand that they were not receptive to having any landscaping on their property, even if it was at the expense of Union Fire Department. So what we proposed was, and it was suggested by staff, and what we agreed to and are proposing here, is that private hedge right along from where their tree line ends to where our EMS building begins. Then there will be a split-rail fence with foundation plantings, possibly hydrangea. And then there will be an extension of that hedge to where the tree line then picks back up at the northernmost portion. So we have a five-foot area that we're able to work with, and we think we can accomplish that program. So at least looking from a western standpoint, what you would see is your own tree line, the private hedge, that split-rail fence, along with that western portion of that EMS building that has no windows or doors. That's where the vehicle is located, and then ultimately the private hedge to the, back to the tree line.
Madam Chair, I have a question from Ms. Hogan. I think one of the things we heard in the last meeting, because we're still looking at this with the EMS building on site, I think one of the questions I heard a couple of times was about a needs assessment and analysis. I mean, we've heard that it's needed. I suspect it probably is in the area. Were there studies, or is there something written up somewhere that describes or documents the need?
I'm sorry, I'm just looking into the audience for the town staff member on that. We'll have him come up and answer that. And I do, I was handed a series of emails from Mr. Parker at the commencement of the meeting, and there are a number of items in there that I think I need to address to clarify. Now's as good a time as any. So one of the emails was concerned that we were making room for a private ambulance company. Hopefully, it's made clear by now that this is not a private company. This is a municipal arm of the town, and so that particular email should be a non-issue as far as you're concerned. There was also a question raised in one of them about the taxes and the concern that the implication was that the district was essentially gouging the town by charging rent for 10 years. So let me explain what the proposal was. The Fire District has been, for several years, in its capital improvement budget, which is a very public process, and we have an annual meeting every year. The district sets aside son funds every year for capital building improvements. And when we reach the desired capital level for proceeding on our next project, that's when we proceed. We don't take out loans and pay interest to the banks. And we were proposing, quite frankly, or the parties had agreed, that the district would fund the construction of this process, and the town would pay us back for that on an annual basis for the cost of construction. And then the town would so-called lease the property for a dollar a year henceforth after the building was paid off. So that's the nature of the beast there. As some of you might know, the firefighting station forestry, you know, over near where Bennys used to be, is on townland, and there is an agreement there for the district to rent for a dollar a year. So it was a similar kind of arrangement. In regards to the comments that this hasn't been planned, there's no comprehensive plan for the fire service, I would respectfully disagree and suggest and advise that the Union Fire District is an independent chartered entity. We are chartered by the General Assembly, have been since the 1800s. The Town of South Kingstown has no jurisdictional authority to disband us, take over the fire stations, or any of the things that are suggested in one of these letters. So I don't think you need to waste any time on that. The bulk of the site concerns have already been discussed by our engineer. And there is one item in here about light pollution being a concern, and certainly if the Board had requirements for dark sky compliant lighting and motion detectors and things of that nature, we don't object to anything of that nature. That's it to address, I think, the emails. Again, we've just handed them this evening, so I'm kind of in the same boat as you guys with the stuff you were just handed.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I know Mr. Jordan had a question, but just as a setting the stage for that question, counsel tonight advised you in an introductory statement about what your regulatory responsibilities are. And with regards to whether or not this station belongs there or not from a locational standpoint, that is not subject matter under your jurisdiction. You're reviewing the site plan associated with the development of a particular parcel. I know Chief Stanley is here this evening, and he can probably bring some insight to the response times and the locational objectives associated with locating something in the southwest portion of town.
Specifically, I mean, I think we've heard that before, that there's a need. I'm just asking if there was anything in writing to that effect, you know? Is there a report? Was there a study? Or are we just relying on, not that I doubt him at all, but, you know?
Good evening. Craig Stanley, chief of EMS. Yeah, based on our patient care reports, those are the reports that we utilize for our data, we see response times, and let me set the stage of our operation, is we have two transport units. We have one that operates out of the Public Safety Building on the corner of 108 and Curtis Corner Road. We have a second unit that operates out of the Public Services Building. So the unit that is at the Public Services Building, their territory, they're responsible for, is East Matunic, Matunic-Greenhill to the Charlestown line. So when they are in the station, their response times will say the Ocean Miss, Peninsula Drive, Truston Park, or anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes, depending on traffic, time of day. So our strategic goal is to add a vehicle, another transport unit, third one in July of next year, and have one in the Matunic area, hopefully at this station, keeping one at the Public Services Building, and then keeping one at the police station at 108. This will cut our response times to that area in half.
That information that's readily available to the public, I mean, if somebody wanted to have a look at...
Yeah, in our response times, the goal we use is for ALS Advanced Life Support to arrive on the scene within eight minutes and 59 seconds. That is a National Fire Protection standard. That is a legal standard that is used in consulting and in the courts. We meet that in 66% of the time.
Paul, did that answer your question about the needs assessment adequately?
Yeah, and adding the third truck there will, because I'm compounded by really three challenges. I don't have enough resources. My call volume is increasing. Since 2017, it's increased 7% a year. In this past year, it's increased 18%. In the past 16, six months, my call volume has gone up 70 to 80 calls per month, which I rely on mutual aid coming in. So I have calls where mutual aid is coming in, in that area that could take up to 20 minutes. We did a cardiac arrest study, we're 172 cardiac arrests since 2017 in that census tract of East Matunic, Matunic and Greenhill. 8.2 cardiac arrests per 1,000 people occur. It's the biggest percentage and has the longest response times. And that's a small percentage of our call volume. I anticipate in December, we will run about 3,800 calls. The vast majority of our calls from an emergency standpoint are strokes, heart attacks, and trauma. trauma.
Do you have any sense of how many calls would be coming to a specific location?
I would say 40% of our calls are from the southern part of the, the vast majority of our calls are within Wakefield, Peacedale, the URI corridor. But the problem is-
Forty percent of that, 70 or 80 a month, you would expect about 30 a month?
Yeah, but if I add three trucks, I've divided all of those parts. So in theory, I anticipate the two trucks in town would run the bulk of the calls, so that, the truck in Mattoonik would be in service more. Because out of a 24-hour period, we're averaging 15 to 18 calls per shift. The average call takes 58 minutes, so that means out of a 24-hour shift, there are no trucks available for up to 15 hours.
What I'm trying to understand is, how many calls a month would you expect from this location? And out of those calls, how many would be in evening hours?
I can't predict that. The only thing I can predict is the amount of calls are increasing per, per year for that. I can look it back and say probably 40% happened towards that part of the town, but age demographics, that could change. My goal, I'm trying to get, is reduce the response times in half.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand from the impacts to the neighbors, what could we expect as far as approximately the number of calls, times that that goes off?
Yeah, yeah.
Times in the evening, is that a lot?
I can't, I can't predict that. I can't, that truck could run 10 calls a shift, six calls per shift, or three.
I guess the question that I think is, when they leave, you know, concerns are noise.
Madam Chair.
The other night, I live in Blackberry Hill, right next to these people. There was an ambulance in the neighborhood. I didn't know, the only way I knew was the lights were going, and I heard a backup beep. It was 11 o'clock-ish. When they leave, they're not blazing sound and flying-
No, and that's one of the things with this station that we would have, is when they leave the station, they would not be able to turn their siren right there or their lights. They'd be able to leave from the station and do that. And we're talking a few seconds, which is not going to have an impact on them leaving the location. Very sensitive to that, and that's one of the designs here that they've talked about, is that when the truck comes in, it's going to come around and not have to back in. So that was one of the things that we were very thankful for the engineers to design that. So that's one thing that the neighbors aren't going to have to hear that.
Madam Chair, just a kind reminder, if the board members can't hear the echo-
You won't hear the recording when we play it back.
Never had that problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Stanley?
Susan, I have a question. For your attorney. And I love their relationship and the structure of our station, and that is also the town and the county. And I'm sure that I've talked about the role of the county and the county. I'm not sure that it's, in view of the time that the nation is not-
From the EMS perspective?
I don't know. I don't intend to, I get a point. Do you work for the town?
Yes, ma'am. The EMS service is part of a town division, just like the police department. The police department is part of the town. We are part of the town of South Kingstown. We are 100% paid department of the town.
So this building, if it were to be only be dedicated for county and-
Correct.
Or equipped than the, let's say, some other location. This building, if it were to be owned by EMS or a private institution, what is this building, is purely built, who'll be using it?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
From an administrative standpoint, staff can attempt to address that, and we do have legal here.
That would be helpful, thank you.
I'm sure the applicant will also weigh in. With regards to your purview, you are reviewing a site plan under development plan review. That site plan includes two buildings. So if you make a motion, favorable motion, you are approving a site plan for the utilization of EMS services, emergency services, fire, war, ambulance, rescue. There is an understanding that Union Fire District will occupy the front building, and that the Town of South Kingstown will occupy the rear building or northwesterly building. I'm not aware of anything in your motion outside of a memorandum of understanding that if for some reason that building was not occupied by South Kingstown's EMS, that would prohibit that building from being constructed and using for, being used for emergency services purposes. That may not be the intention of Union Fire District, but your purview for approval is approving a building and a use, not the occupant.
I'd like to weigh in on that. I don't concur with your legal analysis. There are no, no commercial outfit could come on here. This is a governmentally zoned parcel, and so you couldn't have a commercial entity coming into that building.
So I guess the question for Amy is, could an approval condition the use and/or the entity utilizing that building or not?
The planning board or the zoning board cannot tie approvals to specific occupants or specific users, because as you know, approvals do run with the land, and changes of ownership don't affect existing approvals. But with regard to the GI zone, that does include town land, fire district land. Would the town contract with a private? Would the town decide not to include emergency services in-house and contract out potentially? I'd have to research that.
Madam Chair, I have a question, maybe it's more of a comment, but I guess, I can't, I can't see how we could approve a building when we've just heard that the town isn't necessarily interested in pursuing the building. I think the only way we could consider this is with that building taken out. You can't specify its use or the tenant, and it has to come out for me to even consider really. Does that make sense?
And I think Ms. Hogan referred to that early on in her statement, that potentially consideration of this site plan may be without that building, yes?
Yes. In fact, we have Mr. Casali who's prepared to present on that option as well.
From a simplistic standpoint, assuming architecturally that same program is implemented, if you were to truncate that back building, that's, that's a layout of what would be, what it would look like. In terms of the landscape waivers, you would still ask and need to ask for all five. In terms of zoning, only 10 spaces will now be required and 10 are shown, but you still have to go to the zoning board to ask for relief because the access road is less than 24 feet. So without the EMS building, you still have the five waivers and one variance now instead of two. What you don't see here is we would obviously bring the, both the septic and the drainage, you know, forward or in a southerly direction towards Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road.
So would anything that you're proposing here, would the changes preclude EMS from coming back? If things change a couple of years or five years down the road, does it make it now impossible to do that building, or is it still an option at a later date?
It's an option, but you'd want to build it correctly. You'd want to build the septic the way it was originally laid out and probably the drainage, but, and then maybe dryline some of those water lines. But other, you know, that infrastructure, what you see there, you know, if that access road were to, I just want to show you the old layout. That's all that really happened was truncating that, and those five spaces on the easternmost line, we were able to just put into seven, or 10 in the back, excuse me.
I have a question. I mean, back to what you were saying about the town council saying whether they will or will not approve it. I also don't think we should go taking all that into credence, too. They talk about a lot of stuff that never happens, so I, I mean, they've worked really hard on this. This is, we're getting somewhere, we're moving forward on this. You know, I think about this use, whether, you know, we talk about two buildings or not, and I just don't see how we can do it. I think, you know, since then, this is all I've thought about, like, emergency services, emergency services, emergency services. I had a guy cut his finger off the other day on the job, and we waited like 18 minutes for an ambulance, and it felt like eternity. I couldn't imagine having a sick person and someone being there, and we're talking about some backup noise and life. I don't know. I mean, this is crazy, and I would, I would be cautious to say, because a couple of town council people said they might not approve it. I mean, it's just talk, so.
I have a question about that as well. Maybe this is for Amy.
Go ahead, Josh.
So Amy, I think, going around in circles a little bit here, trying to understand what's in our purview tonight and what's in our jurisdiction tonight. So what I understood when you first sort of framed this out was development plan review, we're looking at the different variances, what's been presented. I thought, my understanding of it was, we're not deciding EMS building or not EMS building for tonight. That's not in our purview, that's not what the planning board is supposed to be doing. Am I correct on that?
Well, what you're supposed to be doing is advising the zoning board, right? You're in an advisory role on the application that's presented. Now, it's up to the applicant to formally say, we're going to modify the application and formally submit that revised site plan without the EMS. So- I think they're looking to get a sense of what the planning board would recommend favorably to the zoning board, but ultimately, the zoning board is the ultimate decision-maker on what's within its purview, which is parking relief, right? Because that's the only kind of relief that's needed. So it, right, it is not within the purview of this planning board to decide whether the town EMS should be part of this application. That's up to the council, and that's up to the applicant.
Not to go around the circle one more time, but just so I understand it fully, because I think this was to Susan's question before, which was, given that, what decisions are we making here tonight in terms of going forward and the implications of those? So I think you were asking that, what's the implication of, of what we present going forward?
I think you'll need to hear that from the applicant.
And I think also DPS and planning staff has not had the opportunity, am I correct, Rich and Jamie, to see this revised plan, and I think that would be important to hear from them as well. And Mr. Casali, as you were making your comments about if the EMS building were not in the plan, you were talking about the septic and you talked about location. Can you talk a little bit about capacity in terms of septic and stormwater and how that might differ?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of stormwater, considering we've already received our DEM permit, the reduction in impervious areas is not a grave effect that would adversely affect that permit. We could certainly modify it, but in, ultimately, stormwater wouldn't change much, if any. And in terms of the septic, it is, it was, you know, both of the buildings were just going into one septic tank and then into a proprietary geometric field. That wouldn't change either, other than maybe the number of units and/or the size of that septic tank. If you were going to, you know, you would probably permit and build this, or at least the infrastructure in one phase, and then you could always build it in a, in two phases if that EMS building were to be there or were not to be there.
And to further clarify, with the elimination of the northern building, you would then be in compliance with the parking requirements?
We could be, yes. We, I mean, we can be in compliance with the parking requirements now. At the, you know, what we're understanding from both the town and the butters, we've reduced the parking areas in order to reduce impervious areas. Programmatically, we can function, but that reduction and need was not precipitated by us in terms of, of overbuilding this site. It was at the request of, of the community. But to answer your question, yes, we would then be able to propose 10 spaces where 10 are required. Unfortunately, we'd still have to go to the zoning board for the width of that access road.
Right, understood. And of course, that's based on the square footage? The building's square footage, correct?
Right, so at the 3570 square feet of program, 350 per space, about 10, 10.2 spaces, yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure I understand. So if that EMS building came out for now, you would still do the infrastructure that could make it possible later?
Well, that, that I'm not, you know, that I'm not sure of. I don't know that we want to go to that expense if it wasn't a real possibility, but if there was a remote possibility, you know, you know, Paul, a dollar today is five tomorrow in the construction world when you got to reopen the ground and so forth and so on.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Casali? Jamie, Jay, Rich, we haven't heard anything from you. Could you, and we understand that you have just received this as well, but-
Madam Chair, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. Again, I did have an opportunity to sit down with Joe Casali last week. We spent a fair amount of time going over some of the revisions that he proposed this evening. We haven't done a full analysis of those changes, nor has the town's engineer had an opportunity to review those revisions or the traffic study that was submitted this evening. We would always like the opportunity to do a complete review and advise you on a motion with the appropriate wording, if it was viewed as consensus of the commission for staff to do so. With regards to Mr. Jordan's comment, and Mr. Daley also mentioned this, too, your purview again is to review the site and the impacts associated with the site development. You have the ability to make recommendations, as council has stated this evening, to the zoning board. You could make a recommendation that, you know, parking spaces, part of the parking spaces were impervious versus pervious. You could make a recommendation that they add a parking space or subtract a parking space. You could make a recommendation to shorten a building or lengthen a building, and then that goes to the zoning board. With regards to potentially making a decision that just eliminates a building because there was discussion at town council, that perhaps could be viewed as short-sighted at this point in time. Again, you're making a recommendation to the planning board. The zoning board has to make a decision. Variants have to be granted along with that decision, and then ultimately, the town council has to enter into a memorandum of understanding. Projects have to be financed and constructed, and a lot can change between today and tomorrow with regards to decisions that are outside the planning board's control.
Understood, thank you.
I'm afraid I still don't quite understand. If we can't control the use of the building, but we approve or recommend a plan that allows a building to be constructed-
So I'll give you a quick-
We don't know how it's going to be used.
But I can give you a quick analogy. You recently evaluated a retail store, and the use for that store in the development plan review was retail. You happen to know the tenant. Whether that tenant goes there or not, you reviewed a retail store, and a different tenant can go there. You can't make an approval that says, we're approving this retail store, but it only can be brand X.
I think that's my point, is that I-
So here, what I'm trying to say to you- Here, what I'm trying to say to you is that you are approving two buildings for the purposes of providing emergency services.
Or not approving.
Or not approving those two buildings for the purposes of emergency services. The intent is Union Fire occupies the southernmost portion of the site, and Town's EMS occupies the northern part of the site. 10 years from now, that could be a contract service in the rear of that building, so long as they're providing emergency services. That could be the Union Fire District, as long as the memorandum of understanding allows them to do that, providing paramedic or other rescue-type services out of that back of building. You are approving and evaluating the use of this property for emergency services. It cannot become XYZ's radiator shop. It still has to be utilized for the purposes of providing public safety. That, that's what the code allows within the general institute, the governmental institutional district.
Does the town use other private contractor EMS providers?
I'm not aware of any at this time.
Any private? It's all town?
Yeah, Chief Stanley is saying no.
Could you just come up to the mic and restate your name for the record and then speak? Thank you.
Greg Stanley, chief of EMS. We are the sole 911 provider, legal provider for the town of South Kingstown. We do not contract with any private companies.
When you talked about overflow, is that Charleston, New York?
Yes, Narragansett, North Kingstown, Exeter, Westerly, they would come and run mutual aid. But we don't have any contract with them. It's a mutual aid agreement under the state.
Is it like business practice to switch to private, or is it a town municipality?
Yeah, that's a business from a community. If, if a community decided they were going to outsource and hire a private model, typically, in private models, they don't initially work out of a station. They may post that in an intersection, but that varies throughout the country and the contracts.
And I'm assuming there's stiff contract, I mean, there's stiff contracts with the municipality and the private contractor, right? Like, I think what people are getting to is if we stop using the town and we bring in a private contractor, it's going to be party central, crazy, wild, like, we have less control over that. But from my understanding, there's probably strict rules and regulations in some kind of contract that would, you know, there would be control over that. So, that's what I'm trying to eliminate some concern.
Yeah, and that all depends on the, on the jurisdiction, what they require in their contracts with that, with that vendor.
And am I understanding correctly that if there were a decision, this is hypothetical in the future, to move towards contracting services, it wouldn't be South Kingstown EMS deciding to contract with someone else. It would be the town...
It would be the town, correct.
...deciding to contract with someone else. And there would be likely a public process whereby that would be discussed, right?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And, and so to be clear, the board could condition the use but not the tenant?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I just add one thing for clarification? In the context of the uses, if, so, we, I believe we all understand that the, that the site plan that's being reviewed is for emergency services. If for some reason the times change, and perhaps the emergency services aspect of it is abandoned, if that were to be considered for an alternative use that is not in the same use category, it would trigger DPR and it would have to come back. So, it's not like despite the unknowns of what might happen in the future, they just can't go in and do something. If it, if it transitions out of the realm of the emergency services, public services category, and it's allowed in the GI zone, it would still have to come back as a change of use, as DPR.
Thank you, Jay. Certainly, go ahead.
So, I don't want to disagree with you, Jamie, but I do, because I feel like I'm not conflicted between this fast food restaurant or the other one and trying to pick and choose which flavor I like better. I think this is much more difficult because we are choosing to permit an essential service, and I think none of us would deny that this is a very valuable and needed thing in our town. But to deny this makes me feel like I'm promoting heart attacks, and, and that's not really, that, that's the way I feel. I believe that there's a better location for this project, but I'm not allowed to say that because that's not within my purview. But I'm not comfortable with the amount of pavement and the amount of traffic and the amount of noise and the tight site constraints, because if we are growing as a town, and especially in our beach community, I don't think it'll be terribly long before two units are required down in Mattoonik. And we're going to be back here again looking for a larger site that will accommodate a double-wide garage for two units. You could never have a second one on the site. And then we'll have this paved site with a building that we don't really have a use for any longer, and it's sort of up for grabs. But I don't feel like I'm choosing that I want to have this kind of EMS versus that kind. It's about us, me, feeling like I'm trying to deny this essential service to town if I don't like this site, and that's the difference for me.
Thank you, Susan. Jamie?
Madam Chair, just Susan's remarks are on point with regards to your, the struggle and, and what you're deliberating. I think the aspect of it is, as a planning board, you need to make a recommendation based on the proposed uses before you and the impacts of those proposed uses. If you have concerns about the uses and the structure and impact of those uses, that's within your purview. Whether you, you know, in doing so, you may have the opinion that there's a different location or a better site. You can't base your decisions solely on that. But you do have the authority under your regulations to make determinations on impact. And if you feel the impact is to, you know, the impact of, of sightline or safe stopping distance is an issue, or drainage, those are impacts associated with potentially two buildings on the site. That's within your purview. So, again, I'm not asking you, you're not choosing between McDonald's and Burger King or Dollar General and Dollar Tree, but you are looking at this as a public safety facility and the utilization of this site and this configuration for that.
Thank you, Jamie. This is a public hearing, and we would like to hear from the public. Before we do so, are there any further comments at this point in time?
I just had, I wanted to ask the fire chief, if he could come up. Last time we were here, he talked about the process of trying to define property, and I know it went quickly, but it was like, tell us how long it took and how you came about.
Mr. Pinch?
Thanks.
You have the floor.
Chief Pinch, chief of the Union Fire District. Yeah, we started this process to renovate the Mattoonik Fire Station in 2014. And as you know, the site is long and narrow. I've been a surveyor for many years. I'm familiar with how sites are developed. I realize the site is not ideal. I also know the area very well, lifelong resident of South Kingstown. And I know a lot of people say it should be a different site. I haven't seen anybody show me a site where it can go. We did look at all the sites that were available. We spent a lot of time with the land trust. We had a letter from the land trust. I don't know if you get to see it. I don't really know how to take that, but it does verify that we were talking to them for a long time. You know, you can imagine, if they could just give us some land on the right of the station, all the bays could be up front, and we wouldn't have any of this back land to deal with. Would be the ideal way to plan the rescue and the fire station. However, in their letter, they did verify again that they didn't want to do that, and even Terry Murphy spoke to them as well recently, and they still would not give us any more land. So...
Could I address that real, real quickly? I have subsequently learned that the state also has an easement on that property, and it was impossible for the land trust. The state wouldn't break their easement, so the land trust couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah, so whether, no matter whose fault, whose fault it was, we just couldn't get it. So, you know, a lot of people came back out and said, well, the land trust has got to give it to you, the fire department. Well, they don't have to, and they didn't. So, you know, we have to deal with what we have in front of us. We know there's a need. We desperately need the fire station renovated. It's an awful condition. It's long overdue to be renovated. Even though the rescue is not under my jurisdiction, I realize it's a big need. We respond down there. We know the wait times. It's, it's not fair for residents in 2021 to wait 20 minutes for a rescue. And quite frankly, people don't have that time when they're having a heart attack. So, that's what we're faced with. We know the site's tight, and like I said, I've been a surveyor for many years. I'm familiar with the site, and, you know, I know it's very tight. We try to get everything to minimize the use, but I think we're doing a project that's going to benefit a great number of citizens of South Kingstown. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind. Myself, like the attorney and other members, we're a little disappointed with the back and forth from the council and everything because we're doing this to help the town. They came to us, and we wanted to be good partners and help them. We know there's a need. But the reason we get in, we get a little frustrated is because if we come here again, we've been in front of planning and with the planning board for quite some time, with the planning department for quite some time. So, taking the back building off, we got to go back to review. They want to go back to TRC. It's months after months. Months matter. That's months when somebody's not going to have a rescue, months when the fire station's not going to be manned. So, we get frustrated with that time. And I know there's a process and all that, but I don't think there's any surprises down here. A lot's not going to get any bigger. There's not a lot you can do. So, I hope that helped. If anybody has anything else, warm up. Happy to address any other concerns you guys might have.
Thank you, Chief Pinch.
Thanks.
And Jamie, a follow-up question. If the plan were to be modified to eliminate that building, procedurally, would, would Chief Pinch's suggestion about having to go back to TRC and what would be the process, given the fact that much of their permitting is already in place?
Without legal counsel correcting me, you're in the application queue. I believe they could stay in this queue under DPR. The site isn't being proposed to get bigger. It would be a reduction. It wouldn't violate your notice because it's not an expansion of anything that has been previously noticed. It's actually a reduction. So, I think it could continue along this queue without having to go back to TRC and restarting the process.
Thank you, Jamie. Any further questions or comments from board members before we go to the public? And I would just like to state that this evening, we have received four letters. We, probably most of the board members have not had the opportunity to actually read them completely. One is from Robert Hefner, one is from Julia Landstreet, John and Justine Dolan, and then one signed by Richard and Kristen Schwab, Dave and Carol Styler, Christian and Karisti Mundie, and John and Justine Dolan. That said, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please come up to the mic and state your name for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the board. My name is Christian Mundie from 216 Osprey. And, you know, I guess, nobody is against, Pete, nobody's against the service. Nobody wants to wait. Nobody, we, we want to help the chief improve the response times. What we don't understand is why the buildings are dictating that, why it's the ambulances that are going to fix that response time. It's the EMTs that are going to fix that response time, not the building. So, I don't understand why we're not thinking out of the box. Yes, the town has gotten bigger. Yes, the population has gotten larger. Yes, the need has increased. Poor health, changes in the environment, whatever it is, texting while you drive, whatever it is. Yes, the need has increased. But it isn't the building that's going to increase that response time. It's the ambulances and the EMTs. So, the way I look at it is, it's, it's overdevelopment, unnecessary overdevelopment. The, the codes of the times, the requirements of the times, and the building needs of the times have outgrown that site. What I heard last night, as I've heard since I, since I availed myself to this process, is the first answer to this property is, is it the perfect site? It's always no. There's always a stammer. It's never, yes, this is the right spot. Can't wait to build on this spot. Eh, we're going to settle for this spot, is what it most, almost always is. So, what I heard last night was, the, the town council asked the question, did you advertise that you needed land? The answer to that was no. Did you talk to other people that you needed land? Did you enlist the support of the community? The answer to that was no. And again, I don't want to stop the response time from being improved. I don't think any of us do. In fact, we offered to, to become a voluntary part of the community to go out and solicit, or drive funds, or whatever is needed to help this process get to, to a parcel of land that has a better response time. So, with that, what I saw the town council doing last night was listening to the citizens, the taxpayers, and, and, and listen to them. So, the emails you got that maybe you haven't read, I hope you don't disregard them as you were advised. I do hope you read them. So, my advice, I'm not a member of the legal community, but I hope you listen to your, your citizens and your taxpayers, and just listen. Just listen to see what they have, read what they have to say. We don't know the legal mumbo jumbo. We don't know what's right. But I can assure you, we don't want to stop the response time, but it's not the building that's going to increase that response time. It's the ambulances and the EMTs. How's that's housed? How's that's legal? I have no clue. But it's the ambulance and the EMTs. I think a question was asked last night, I don't know if the gentleman's here, but the question was asked last night, what are you going to do with the fire department when you're rebuilding it? How long is that site going to be without, the trucks? Where are they going to go? And so, I'm curious, what are you going to, why don't we have the ambulances without the damn building? Pardon my English, Madam Chair, so, or my vocabulary, but I guess that's what I have to say. I can't speak to the Schwabs. They're out of town. I think it was for a longtime family friend's funeral, and now they're also taking care of some elderly parents, you know, about the landscape along the west side, directly abating property. Doesn't sound like Mr. Schwab not to make himself available, but, you know, again, that's, that's our position. We're not trying to stifle response times. We get the need is going up, but it's not the building. And that building's going to disappear for a number of months, too. So, where are those trucks going to go when there's no building? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so that you know, this board is very thorough and deliberate and reads every letter and every bit of correspondence, and we endeavor to ask for enough time to do so.
I'd like to add, even though I'm not legal counsel, please, read the stuff they submitted you to. I would never tell you to ignore their stuff.
Thank you.
Yes, my name's Arthur Main. I was one of the hot... I believe we do need a station. We need one there, but maybe two ambulances. They came to me 45 minutes it took, and I live three miles away from that station. So, we do need something.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maureen Rooney, and I live on Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. I didn't, I wasn't aware that there was a town council meeting last night about this. Otherwise, I would have been there. What I heard tonight were a lot of hypotheticals. What if about noise? What if about traffic? What if the building gets sold to somebody else? Those are hypotheticals. As this gentleman just said, he had to wait, what was it, 40 minutes? 45 minutes, for an ambulance to come. Proximity to the accident does matter. The farther away these ambulances are, the longer everybody has to wait. And having had to wait for my mother, not here in Mattoonik, because I was living elsewhere a long time, and she died, that is not something I want anybody to have to go through. I also listened to things that you guys said, and a lot of this seems to have been started by the neighbor to the fire station. Seems to me, from my point of view, and again, I'm not a legal person, but that he may not, or she may not, the family may not have done due diligence. They bought a property right next to a fire station that was zoned in a different manner. As a property owner who has lived all over the world, I know when I go into a new place, I need to make sure I know what I'm buying and what's next to me, and what those laws look like, and if it's zoned differently, and what that might have potentially, how it might potentially affect me. A family didn't do that, so now I have to suffer? My community has to suffer? That doesn't seem right to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is James Meyer, I live on Schoolhouse Road in Mattoonik, longtime resident. I can speak to the amount of land available for development in the area. There's very little. We have a piece of property that can be used efficiently and effectively to help the community. Use it to its utmost. Exploit it to its utmost, so that the other land that is preserved by the land trust and by other members of the community stays as open space. Again, use it to its utmost. Put the EMS facility there. Vote for that. Vote for everything that these professionals are looking for. They're here to help the community. And any vote otherwise would be a vote against what they stand for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think anyone's against EMS. The town is looking for the best EMS, at the best location, to best serve the citizens. And I'm here today to ask for the quantitative data. I've heard a lot of subjective information, hypotheticals. Where is the data? I think, was it Joseph, you asked, who asked for the needs assessment?
Paul.
Paul, sorry. So Paul, we need a needs assessment. I'm sure we have it, 'cause this has been going on for years that I'm hearing. Where is a needs assessment? And a couple of my, a couple of questions are, do we have five to 10 years of data on the performance of the EMS? What's the response time difference between the police station on Route 1, or the police station on 108 and Curtis Corner? Mattoonik elemen, it's right next to Mattoonik Elementary School. My fear is, okay, it's in the morning, and alarm goes off, they're behind a bus. What happens? What happens if the ambulance is behind a bus?
I think the bus pulls over.
Well, if they're stopped and they're picking up kids. No, I'm talking, no, the bus doesn't move over, I think, I mean, the state law is, when a bus is stopped, picking up kids, the state law for regular people, you wait for the bus, and you give them, does the ambulance go around it? My concern is fundamentally, it's at a school site where they come in the morning and they leave in the afternoon. How is that factored in? That's a big case. As far as the response time, I did, I did some research, I heard, where is that? Okay, what is good EMS response time? And we have to get to the quantitative data. So as mentioned earlier, a generally accepted standard is that ambulances should arrive under 13 minutes to rural areas, and nine minutes in urban areas. Is this a rural area or an urban area? 'Cause I heard the eight minutes and 59 seconds. So the standard, if we're a rural area, is 13 minutes. So I'm just, I'm just using this as getting, getting to the quantitative data. Now, further, as far as, Ms. Axelrod, this is Ms. Axelrod, she stated that, what's the scalability? What happens if we have to go to one to two? We're probably gonna have to go to two. It can't scale. It can't scale. So you can't go from one to two. Now you have to look for another site. So this is, seems to be a short-term solution. And I did, I did look at the other fire departments, and Tucker Town, which is really close, Tucker Town is seven times larger. Can I ask the question of why Tucker Town isn't being considered? Can I ask that question?
If you could finish your commentary, and then we can ask.
Because, but it's, it is seven times larger. It's not next to a school. It has scalability, it has growth, and I just did basic research, and that seems to fit the bill of the southern part of the town. So my question is, I'd like to see a needs assessment. What's, what's the difference in response time if we put it at Mattoonik versus the other locations responding and adding an ambulance? And the gentleman beforehand said, "It's not about the building, it's about the EMS." So what's the response time if we put a third ambulance at any of the existing locations? So bottom line, I like to leave it, I do not see the quantitative data. And I've talked to other people, evidently this has been going on for years, we didn't know about it, I was introduced to it last night. So I'm sure I'm asking questions where all this data is available, but the response time differences between Mattoonik or Tucker Town, that, that should be available, and I look forward to getting that. And the town does. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone from the applicant's team like to address Mr. Kotay's questions at this
Those questions would need to be answered by the town EMS.
Craig Stanley, chief of EMS with South Kingstown. The question of Tucker Town, is that?
Tucker Town, rural and urban mostly has to do with Medicare charges, based on response to where your population needs. And the response times are really, and based on my 33-year career, response times are based on what is acceptable to the community, and what is the community willing to pay for. We can have excellent response times, but that's gonna cost a lot of money. The Tucker Town, that was an option discussion, but I'll have to have UFD comment on that. I think there was not space at that location with their current equipment. We did, we did, that was, when I first came here in 2017, I did research that, but there wasn't space at the, at the facility.
Excuse me, Mr. Kotay, we need to avoid a back and forth, so if we could just let Chief Stanley proceed, and then you can always come to the mic and ask follow-up questions. Please?
No, that was a location that we certainly looked at, but there wasn't room, based on their apparatus, for us to, to go in there. Then the same discussion of, well, is there room for us to build possibly onto that location? And we didn't move forward that, because there wasn't a lot of space in there.
So you don't have specific data relative to response time comparisons between the different EMS locations?
Well, we don't respond from Tucker Town. I can only, I can only, my data is only from where the units respond to, to that location. And if they're, whether they are in the station or out of the station, I can go back and look at calls from where they responded from, to the different areas. And response times can be the opposite, where if this truck is in Mattoonik, and the truck in Wakefield, and 108 are not in service, the opposite is going to happen.
Josh?
We had a question earlier, you cited some, some data about response times and call volumes, and, which is all very, very helpful. And I think Paul asked before, if that's publicly available, it is publicly available data, or can be made public?
Yeah, it can be made public. Obviously, the HIPAA compliance of it, and what we're going to what address for, I would have to keep that, but specific areas, I can provide. But because of HIPAA, I can't provide why we went to a certain address. Sure.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I see Chief Pinch has come to the forefront, please.
Yes, Steve Pinch again, chief of the Union Fire District. I wanna talk about the Tucker Town station a little bit, that we renovated a few years ago.
Could you just slow down a little bit?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Thank you.
Chief Stanley was not in charge of emergency medicine when that station was constructed. We did speak to the town about adding a rescue to that station as well. However, at the time, town manager Steve Alfred did not back a rescue going at the Tucker Town station. He did not feel he wanted his rescues going down Ministerial Road, and he felt that location was too close to where the rescue already is, and it wouldn't benefit the south end as much as having it in the Mattoonik area. So at that time, we didn't have any further discussions about putting the rescue at Tucker Town station.
Mr. Kotay, do you need further clarification? Do you have any additional questions, so that we have, so that we're clear on, on any additional data we might ask for? And if the answer is yes, please come back up to the mic and state your name for the
Dave Kotay, Wakefield. Yes, I'm looking for the needs assessment and the data for the justification of the EMS. And when I said the difference is, like, what are the response times for the 108 Curtis Corner Police Station, the police station, the EMS's on Route 1? And if we add one ambulance, two ambulances at either one of those locations, does that solve the problem? Can we, can we scale the existing location to solve the problem? So the, the needs assessment is just critical.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Thoughts from board members? We have some questions that have been asked by both board members and the public. We have potential information and evaluation to come from planning and DPS, in order to help us to make our advisory decision to the zoning board. So any additional thoughts at this point? How would you like to direct staff moving forward?
Well, I think, if it's okay, I'll just express what I, my opinion is, based on what I've heard. First of all, I think that the, starting with the fire department, I think the fire department is essential, it's a critical need to the, to the community. Provides invaluable service. The fire department's been there for a long time. To me, it really comes down to two questions, is, is what they're proposing reasonable? And second of all, is, given the constraints that they're under, are they mitigating the potential impacts to the maximum extent practicable? And I believe that the team has done an excellent job, given the constraints that they're under. So for me, both of those answers are a yes. And then the same would be applied to the EMS. I don't think it's gonna be our decision where that goes. I trust, or at least I hope, that the town and the EMS leader has done a thorough analysis. I hope that they err on the side of safety. I understand that there might be some impacts to the, to the neighbors, but our job is to look out for the whole community. So again, with the EMS, same two questions come up in my mind. Is what they're proposing reasonable? And are they mitigating the potential impacts to the neighbors to the maximum extent practicable, given the constraints that they're under? And I would find the answer, again, to both of those, yes. So that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Joe. Paul?
Yeah, I think, at this point, I mean, I understand that the building can only be used for EMS, so I think a draft motion with, you know, whatever additional conditions staff thinks are appropriate, for the plan that's, that's presented here, understanding that the building may or may not get built, but...
So I'm sitting on a fence here. I think I really would like to see the data that has been brought up tonight. I'm also very interested in seeing data about response times and distances, and what if we looked at adding another unit to one of the established firehouses in town that has, has space? I'm feeling a little, I know that last night at the town council meeting, Mattoonik property, Mattoonik Elementary School property was discussed. Tonight, Tucker Town came up. There have been other questions about other space that I feel haven't been explored enough, that I feel like if I chose this site, I would be settling for, I would be settling. And is this the best we can do? Because I believe this site's not large enough to accommodate the amount of activity on the site. So I would prefer to see some more data, and also truly feel like we've exhausted our other, our other options. There were questions last night about whether advertisements had gone out looking for space, or, you know, would there be other options? And those haven't been explored yet. We're just, we sort of settled on this one, and we don't really like it, but we're gonna just accept it. I would like to see more choices given to this project.
Thanks, Susan. Peter?
I agree with Joe a lot on what he said, and, you know, the constraints, and someone mentioned, you know, utilize the space that we are utilizing, instead of having a fire station here, and EMS Green Hill, keep it all in one place. You know, I, I see a benefit to having it as close to the school. Just, I could see a lot of things going wrong there at the school. Response time, my office is right down the street, it takes me 12 minutes to get to Blackberry Hill. I probably drive a little faster than I should, but to get to Green Hill, you're probably at least 18. So I get it. I know it's not perfect. I don't think it'll ever be perfect. I think if we brought up Tucker Town, I bet we'd have eight people, nine people sitting right there, saying very similar things to those people sitting over there. I don't think anyone's ever gonna say, "Yeah, this is a home run, let's do it." I know we're talking about, we think we didn't do a lot of research here. It sounds like this team has done a lot of research. Just because some of us are newer to the game, and we're just finding out about it, doesn't mean that they haven't done their research. So I'm in, I'm in favor for it, and I think, I think it'll be a great addition.
Thanks, Peter. Josh?
So I think the Union Fire District and their team, and I think, you know, they've done a lot of great work here to try to think through those mitigation strategies, thinking through how to make this work in a very constrained site. I've heard the concerns, I think the last time we had this conversation, you know, I thought we made some progress in terms of talking about, within the constraints, how do we do the mitigation around noise, and around lights, and other things like that? You know, Joe had brought up some proactive thoughts, constructive thoughts about engaging the neighbors. I was disappointed to hear that the neighbors were not open to that. I go similarly to Joe, I think that, you know, looking within the constraints, and looking within the need for both services, and, and looking at the work that's been done to, to mitigate concerns around, you know, noise, other sorts of things, I think the work has been done, and so I'm, I'm inclined to, to support what's been presented.
Thank you, Josh. Like many of my fellow board members, I understand that every site has some degree of constraints. Clearly, this applicant has attempted to make some modifications based on feedback from the board and from staff. I think it would be useful to have staff input and a memo related to the changes, and how they impact good land use planning, and DPS input as well. And any additional data that could be had and then referenced in our advisory memo would also be useful. So I would support having research information and a, a draft decision incorporating all of those issues for our next regular meeting. Is everyone mostly in agreement with this?
Yes.
Yes. Amy, do you feel that we need a motion to this extent, or is our consensus adequate?
I think the consensus is adequate.
Okay. Any other items that board members wish? Any other items that board members wish staff to research prior to the next meeting? Everyone good? Josh, you're looking thoughtful.
Maria, I, I think you, in your request to the, to the staff, you, you said that they would look at and review the, the data.
Yes.
That's from, from the fire department or from EMS?
And that would be referenced in, in any, in a motion going forward. Jay, Jamie Rich? Anything that we're missing?
I would just like to ask Craig, if, Craig, you could provide us with some of that redacted data? Because we don't have it as, at our disposal. And of course, we'd share it with the applicant when we received it. Thank you.
So can I just clar, sorry?
Yes.
Can I just clarify that we're talking about a motion to approve the site as we see it here on the screen, not the fire station alone without the, the ambulance bay? Like, it's, it's the whole thing.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, my understanding as your planning director is there's consensus on the planning board for staff to undertake a final review of the site plan that was presented to you this evening. Work with the applicant's representative on any questions or modifications that we would discuss, which would move forward the sediment with regards to mitigating the impacts to the surrounding area and the director butters. In addition to that, provide, work with Chief Stanley with regards to looking at data sets associated with response times and possible call volume associated with the location of the station as presented to you and what effects that has. You know, what are the existing call times from his existing dispatch areas? And what would the implications be if it was located here? Are they cut, to Joe's point, are they cut in half? Is the response time 18 minutes now becomes nine minutes? But again, to Mr. Stanley's presentation tonight, he can only look at historic data in an attempt to predict what the future is. But that future data is also uncertain and can be difficult to understand. So we will do our best as your staff, working with both Union Fire District and the town's representative being Mr. Stanley, as it relates to providing that data and making any recommendations and developing a draft motion for your consideration.
Thank you, Jamie. And by the way, on the western portion of the site, please keep in mind if we are thinking about a visual and/or audio buffer, that privet and hydrangea are deciduous in nature and may not be as effective as others.
I think my understanding in speaking with Mr. Cassaly is that the building is that sound barrier. It is, in essence, that large wall that is in close proximity to that. The intent to, in our initial discussions, was to do some foundation plantings to softing the building in its proximity to their property line, also delineate the actual property line. And they proposed a split rail fence, but both to the north and southern portion of that building to provide a visual buffer in the form of a private hedge.
Again, just, just a thought and move forward.
Madam Chair, just one quick inquiry for housekeeping.
Yes.
Next month being Thanksgiving, what is your meeting date?
I believe it is the 23rd.
Is it a Tuesday?
It would be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we are pretty complete as far as our requests from staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
We generally take a break at nine. It is four minutes to nine. However, we don't really have anything on the agenda other than a volunteer for the TRC. What is the date of that, Jay? The 10th? Do we have a vol?
Wait, maybe.
We already got a yes from Paul. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Oh, Jay.
Just before you adjourn.
Yes.
And I'll give a moment.
Yes, speak up a little because.
Under Agenda Item H, comments and board members and/or planning director. I know at our last, if, you want me to wait a minute?
Yes, why don't you wait a minute because it's.
Okay. With regards to our upcoming meeting schedule, last, two weeks ago, you had South County Hospital on your agenda under the work session associated with their proposed changes to the town zoning regulations and an amendment to the zoning map. We looked at potentially holding a special meeting outside of that work session due to a conflict by the applicant's legal representation. When we looked at calendars and availability, we potentially looked at moving that work session to the following Thursday, which I believe would be the 18th. We do not have council chambers available that evening. Looked to back that up to the 17th, and we do not have council chambers available on that evening. Again, our requirement's to have the meetings in public, record those meetings, limit our availability to this space. So we will potentially send out a, a poll, whether it's a doodle poll, to the board members on potential dates based on the availability of this meeting. There is potentially the chance that your regularly scheduled meeting is the meeting date that we have chamber available to us without completely going outside the box with a two or three-week delay for a regular session. We will do our best to accommodate the applicant, but your meeting schedule is set annually. And when people apply, I'm sure they're aware of that. The other potential thing, and I'm sure a board member may ask, can't we add it to our regularly scheduled meeting? Our agenda for that meeting is extremely taxed at this point in time, but we will also look at that. I'm sure you do not want to be here till midnight.
No, and I don't think the applicant.
I don't think it's fair to the applicant either to be towards the end of that agenda and they come up at 10 or 11 o'clock at night.
And they did grant us an extension of time until, was it mid-December?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I, I don't recall what that timeframe is. I just wanted to add that since Paul has graciously volunteered already for TRC, that TRC agenda is looking very full. So that leads, that obviously could translate to a heavy December. And in December, you will most likely only have your regular session meeting, I believe, at the normal work session date to free up the time around the holidays. And the status of some projects are unclear, so there may be a need to have special meetings either due to the hospital's discussion or other larger projects that might become ready for review. It's something that I can anticipate, but it's something to put in the back of everybody's heads when we talk about scheduling over the next two months. It, it may prove to be a little difficult.
Thanks, Jay.
That would be your choice?
Choose.
Would you, are you okay with having staff sleep in that day? Or would you like to do it first thing in the morning?
I'm just thinking like 4:30.
No, generally it's nine or one, or the, nine is fine.
Thanks. Thank you, Paul. Motion to adjourn? Motion from Joe, second from Peter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.